All right, good evening and welcome to the November 29th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, can we stand this way? All right, on our agendas, we only have one item tonight, which I assume everyone's here for, and that's to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds and solicit public input. So I'm going to ask the board to open the public hearing in a minute. The process we're going to follow is going to be pretty similar to tax classification, but we're going to go, I mean, that's going to be pretty relaxed since the whole point of this is just to get public input. So we'll, after opening the hearing, have a presentation from town administration for everyone. Then we'll turn to board questions and comments and open it up to the public for questions and comments. Like I said, it's going to be pretty relaxed compared to what we usually do. So with that, is there a motion to open the hearing? A second?
Second.
What's been made in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. With that, I'll turn things over to the town manager.
Great, thank you. I'm not sure if everyone can see this. Great. So, and can everybody hear me if I keep my mask on? If you can hear okay? If for any reason you can't, let me know, then I'll lower it while I talk. Thank you, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to present. So with me tonight is our assistant, Tommy Adger, and CFO, Ed Kuzinovich, and our town accountant, Tom Zedellis. We're all here to hopefully present to you just an overview of the ARPA funds, what they can be used for, what some of the processes, and hopefully to answer some of your questions. Our thought was we'd go through the presentation, obviously listen to input from the public and questions, and anything that we don't have answers for, rather than give the wrong answer, we just want the opportunity to go back and look it up because, as you can see, a lot of it is very complicated. So we may not be able to answer right away what, if anyone who might have a question specific to a certain use. So if we can, we'll do so tonight, and if not, we'll report back to the board and we can get you some accurate information. So, let's see. So the first thing is, basic, I'm going to go through some of the slides in detail and other I'm going to skip through that we can always go back on. But basically, the ARPA plan is the American Rescue Plan Act. It was signed into law by the President in March of 2021, and its intent is to provide direct relief to cities and towns across the country, as well as through states. The U.S. Department of Treasury is responsible for overseeing this program. According to the U.S. Department of Treasury, these funds will provide eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments with a substantial infusion of resources to meet pandemic response needs and rebuild a stronger and more equitable economy as the country recovers. So that is the whole intent of the law. Concurrent with this, Treasury published an interim final rule that implements the provisions of this program. Again, it's an interim final rule, it's not the final rule. So that's important because Treasury is still working on some of the details of this program. Local governments are going to receive the funds in two allocations, and this includes Auburn. The first allocation was made in the spring of 2021, and the second will be made in May of 2022. So approximately a year apart. Funding has to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, so three years from now, and expended by December 31st, 2026. So obligated by 2024, December, and expended by 2026. The federal ARPA funds that are allocated to the town of Auburn will total $5,011,472. Of that amount, $1,754,873 is the municipal allocation. And here in Massachusetts, other than one county that has county formal government, we don't have county formal government here in this area. Most places in Massachusetts don't. So there's a county allocation that is then distributed amongst towns in an area where there is no county. So Auburn is getting an additional allocation under the county allocation portion, and that amount is actually even larger than the municipal allocation. That's the majority of it, which is $3,256,599. So in accordance with receiving two tranches of funding, the town has received approximately 50% of the funds. The remaining 50% will come in May of 2022. The funding objectives of ARPA are to support urgent COVID-19 response efforts to continue to decrease the spread of the virus and bring the pandemic under control, to replace lost revenue for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments, to strengthen support for vital public services and help retain jobs, to support immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, and to address systemic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the unequal impact of the pandemic. So with that being said, Congress developed this program to be able to use the funds to support public health expenditures, to address negative economic impacts, to replace lost public sector revenue, to provide premium pay for essential workers, and to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And I do want to point out that we have created, and it's at the end of the presentation, but in case anyone, don't worry about taking notes on any of this. This presentation will be on our website. We've created a page on the town's website just for ARPA-related information. So we'll make sure that this is on there. So the funding must fit into one of four statutory categories. One, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. To respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to such eligible workers as the recipient or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who performed essential work. For the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such recipient due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the recipient prior to the emergency. And to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure. So those four categorical, excuse me, statutory categories are then split into what they call seven summary expenditure categories. So the categories that you can expend funds are public health, negative economic impacts, services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative. So the U.S. Treasury has come out with a list, which is very extensive. And it's not the final list, but it appears to be, at this point in the interim final rule, outlining each of the uses in the categories that we just went over with you. So I won't go through every one, but I'm going to try to give you some, a little bit of an overview. You can always go back to any of the charts if you want to see them. So really, what types of COVID-19 response mitigation prevention activities are eligible? And again, a lot of this is on our website. This is from the U.S. Department of Treasury. This is from a number of other sites, including state sites, that will provide Q and A on this program. So basically, there's a broad range of services that can be covered with this. It includes, and this is under public health, it includes vaccination programs, medical care, testing, contact tracing, support for isolation or quarantine, supports for vulnerable populations, public health surveillance on trending analysis, public communication efforts for public health reasons, enhancements to healthcare capacity, support for prevention mitigation or other services in congregate living, ventilation improvements in congregate settings, health settings, or other key locations, enhancement of public health data, and other public health responses. The capital investments in public facilities are also eligible, certain ones, such as physical plant improvements at public hospitals and health clinics. So knowing that is the general use of some of the public health funds. I want to just take you through some of the slides that show the U.S. Department of Treasury's listing. And each of the seven categories will have a similar listing to this. So as you can see, this one, public health, has sections 1.1 through 1.12. And these are showing the categories of which you can use the money in public health. Wherever you see a little, on this screen anyway, it looks like an upside down V, it denotes areas where recipients have to report and where the projects are primarily serving disadvantaged communities. There is another whole set of criteria for disadvantaged communities. And those with a star denotes areas where the recipient must identify the amount of total funds that are allocated to evidence-based interventions. So certain uses will require additional reporting and accounting to the federal government. What types of services are eligible under the category of negative economic impacts? Just to give you an idea, this includes assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, as well as aid to impacted industries. Assistance to households includes, but isn't limited to, food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling, legal aid, home repairs, weatherization, emergency assistance for burials, internet access, digital literacy, et cetera. Assistance to small business and nonprofits includes, but again, it may not be limited to, loans or grants to mitigate financial hardship, such as declines in revenues. Loans, grants, or in-kind assistance to implement COVID-19 prevention or mitigation, such as physical plant changes, and technical assistance, counseling, or other services to assist with business planning needs. And again, the Treasury has put together a list of eligible expenditures, each of which then will have to go through a rigorous test to make sure it actually is eligible. So that once the funds are expended, we want to be careful that they don't get what you call quad back, that the government doesn't come back at some point and say, "That actually was not an eligible expenditure, and now we have to find another funding source to cover that expenditure." The next category is services to disproportionately impacted communities. And Auburn, in and of itself, as a community, as a census tract, is not considered technically a disproportionately impacted community. However, there could be disproportionately impacted populations within our community. So populations that are low to moderate income. There are certain criteria that would have to be followed to make that determination, and we're waiting for some additional guidance on that from the federal government. But these are the types of disproportionately impacted community eligible expenditures. And until we really know what populations and what demographics here would be eligible, we're probably going to try to avoid looking at some of these because we may not be eligible for any of them. Questions come up, can recovery funds be used to relieve other payroll costs? And this is under, I believe this is under premium pay. So under the interim final rule, recipients can use funds for premium pay for essential public safety, public health, healthcare, human service, and similar employees for their time responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Premium pay is in addition to a worker's regular rate of wages and is not a substitute for normal earnings. Employees who work remotely from a residence are not eligible for premium pay. This pay may be applied retrospectively for work performed since the beginning of the COVID-19 public health emergency, which would be March of 2020. And again, there are two categories of premium pay, the public sector employees and the private sector grants to other employers. Another common question is, can recovery funds be used for stormwater projects and expenses? Recipients may use these funds to invest in necessary improvements to water and sewer infrastructures, including projects that address the impacts of climate change. Recipients can use this funding to invest in an array of drinking water infrastructure projects, such as building or upgrading facilities, distribution, storage systems. Recipients may also use this funding to invest in wastewater infrastructure projects, including constructing publicly-owned treatment infrastructure, managing and treating stormwater, subsurface drainage water, facilitating water reuse, and securing publicly-owned treatment works. General infrastructure spending is not covered as an eligible expense outside of water, sewer, and broadband investments. And it cannot be above the amount allocated under the revenue loss provisions. The revenue loss provision, which we'll get to, provides for municipalities to put together, and it is required to do this, to put together the revenues that are lost due to COVID-19. And there is a specific formula that had to be followed, and Ed and Tom worked on that formula. And the revenue loss under this category, under infrastructure, you cannot use infrastructure funds that exceed the amount of your revenue loss. So if our revenue loss is $5.2 million over using the formula that the federal government gave us, then we wouldn't be able to spend on infrastructure to exceed that $5.2 million. It's not a concern for us because our revenue loss actually exceeds the amount of money that we're getting in our ARPA funds. So the bottom line is, we know that we're not going to have a cap on the infrastructure based on our revenue loss because the revenue loss is over and above what we're getting for funding. So again, here are some of the infrastructure uses according to Treasury. As you can see, there's a large list of what could be used for infrastructure. This is probably one of the largest categories of ARPA funds. Can recovery funds be used to fund lost revenue? Which is what we were just talking about with the revenue loss for municipalities. You can use these dollars to fund your lost revenue. The definition draws on the census definition, and then there's a whole, I won't go through, but there's a whole formula to come up with what your revenue loss is. Government services within this revenue loss calculation can include, but is not limited to, maintenance of infrastructure, modernization of cybersecurity, health services, school, education, and public safety services. When you calculate it, we have to sum across all revenue streams covered as general revenue to determine the loss. And again, that is something that Ed and Tom worked on to come up with our dollar amount. Every municipality has to do this to have an understanding of what your revenue loss is, even if you're not recommending you use the funds for revenue loss replacement. Can recovery funds be used to cover administrative costs? And again, this is the seventh category of the seven that we listed earlier, is administrative. Under this, funds may be used to pay administrative costs, including payment to consultants or payroll to assist with the implementation of ARPA projects. It includes the cost of consultants to ensure effective project management, as well as legal and regulatory compliance. Funds may be used to increase staff capacity in order to stabilize government operations. So in other words, you can use it for administrative costs in support of the program. So if you're going to create a brand-new program that you don't currently have the capacity for, the funds can be used to pay for the staffing to run that program or to pay a consultant to run that program for you. So again, here's the categories of administrative. So one of the biggest things with this program, it's great that we're getting these revenues from the federal government. $5 million is a lot of money. But with it comes an extensive compliance and reporting requirement. So I'm not going to go into all of them, but just to suffice it to say, the rules are still being developed as to how this reporting is going to work. Our major number one concern is we're going to do everything we can to make sure that any funds that are recommended to be expended fit the categories very cleanly because we don't want to put something into a category and find out later that it was not eligible and have it quad back. So we are a, we are not what you call an entitlement community. An entitlement community is a community, generally the larger cities in the state and the country, that receive funds through the federal government, generally through HUD. And they're entitlement communities, meaning it's formula-based and they get direct funding to their community. And again, it's generally the cities. Auburn is not an entitlement community. We don't get annual direct funding from HUD. So non-entitlement units such as Auburn of local government are not required to submit an interim report, but we will be required to submit thereafter quarterly expenditure and annual reports. There is an entire guide on compliance and reporting, and that is something that we recognize is going to be an enormous burden on town administration to make sure that we're keeping up with the reporting. So based on all this, our preliminary general ARPA recommendations, and I say general because you saw the categories, so just basically kind of looking at the categories and what generally town administration looked at. So we spent about four months internally working with every department to determine what the needs are in the community as identified by each department and what would potentially fit into ARPA recommendations. Recognizing that there are a lot of moving pieces here, so we don't have a final recommendation. We just have some categories that we felt would be good to utilize the dollars in. I would say what drove the majority of our recommendations were categories that would save the taxpayer dollars. It was categories that would allow us to make investments in areas that the taxpayer ultimately would have to pay for through either the CIP or through some type of other planning in the future. For instance, sewer upgrades. And I'm not saying that this will definitely be the final recommendation, but to give you an idea, again, infrastructure is an eligible expenditure. We want to make sure that these particular things would be eligible, but we need to have upgrades and improvements to the Warren Road pump station, the pin rock bypass hookup and generator, the Sword Street covert, the sewer force main. The reality is, we could spend $5 million on sewer upgrades and still not do all the upgrades that we need to do here in town. Like everywhere else, we're an aging community, aging infrastructure. And as the community ages and the infrastructure ages, it needs to be replaced, repaired. And we're trying to look ahead to see what areas in our sewer infrastructure system need the most work, the most expensive work, and could we put that work under ARPA funds so we don't have to go to the taxpayers for those funds at a later date? Likewise, ADA upgrades and improvements identified in our ADA Transition Plan, which is the American with Disability Act. As you may know, the town embarked on a, probably a year and a half process to come up with an ADA transition plan. And that plan identified the cost of improvements in every one of our municipal school facilities, whether it be buildings, playgrounds, parks, schools. And there's about a 250-page report on our website identifying all the ADA improvements that we should start to make progress toward implementing. So if any of those improvements can be made eligible under ARPA, that would be funding that we wouldn't have to, again, go to the taxpayers for at a later date to make those improvements. Likewise, HVAC replacements and upgrades in municipal buildings. I'm sure you've all heard all the conversations with the police department. And the, in town hall also, we have serious HVAC needs in some of our municipal buildings. Again, the municipal, the HVAC systems are tied into public health. They're tied into public safety with regard to fresh air circulation, things like that. So it's directly related to ARPA and to COVID. So we would be, we have recommended that we look to use some of the funding for HVAC replacements and upgrades in municipal buildings. Public health needs related to COVID, I mentioned several of them that are eligible. Our public health needs are going to continue to grow. We've spent a lot of work in our public health division addressing the impacts of COVID-19 in our community. It's been an enormous challenge for our public health division and our Board of Health to do the contact tracing, to stay updated with all the rules and the regulations, to keep working with the business community to make sure they're in compliance and that they have the assistance they need. So if there are additional needs that have not already been funded or provided for, we would look to spend ARPA dollars on that. That is an eligible use. Water infrastructure and water quality. I want to start by saying, many people don't realize, most of you here in the room, I know we do realize this, that the Auburn Water District and the Elm Hill Water District are independently operated and managed entities. They were created legislatively, they are not considered town departments. There is no direct town involvement with the management, the administration, or the operations of the Water Department, the two districts. That being said, there's actually three districts. Auburn Water covers two of them. And then Elm Hill covers a smaller one. Auburn Water covers about 80% of the town. We thought it would be appropriate to reach out to the water districts to see if there are any ARPA eligible projects that they would want to undertake that would help increase the water quality. Again, the water quality issue is really very much driven by the Clean Water Act and compliance with the Clean Water Act. So there's a lot of pieces to that. We just didn't want to exclude it just because they're not a town department because water quality is important to everybody. So without taking the next step and reaching out to the water district, we weren't sure exactly what they might be looking for for assistance, but if they are seeking assistance, this might be an opportunity for us to help them. Investments in parks and open spaces, this is something a lot of communities are putting forward. Our concern a little bit here is it has to be related to populations that are disproportionately impacted or disparate populations under the law. And again, we're not, as an entire census tract, we're not eligible, but we may have pockets that are eligible. So we'd like to pursue whether we can update and improve some of our parks and open spaces with the understanding that with COVID, it became obvious that for health reasons, people should be outside. They should be focusing on more spaced-out activities with their family and with their friends. And parks have become more used in the last almost two years now. So if there is a possibility to make any of our parks eligible, that's something that benefits the entire community, but we have to directly link it to benefiting a disproportionate population. And that's going to be a little bit of a challenge. Public health and safety upgrades. Again, we need, we're looking at a sprinkler system at the Auburn Public Library. We're in the process of identifying other funds. We may or may not need to go this route. We have a couple of grant applications in process right now. But again, this is a public facility that is seeing a lot of use because of COVID. A lot of actually remote use, obviously during the challenging times, but people are starting to come back to the public library and utilizing it, not just for books, but for other resources. So that might be something that the town would want to consider. Auburn Youth and Family Services, this board, we made a recommendation to this board early October that before we make any other commitments on our ARPA funds, we really felt that we should commit, at that point, of $60,000 to Auburn Youth and Family Services. They are very clearly fit into the category of disproportionately impacted members of the community. And they do run a food bank. So we did, thankfully with the support of the Board of Selectmen, provide $60,000 to Auburn Youth and Family Services. We're in the process right now of developing a scope of work and a contract so we can monitor and make sure we report on those funds. But they're clearly impacted by COVID-19. The demand for their services has increased because of COVID-19, particularly in the era of mental health and mental wellness, as in food provision. And then lastly, premium pay for essential municipal workers. This was something we didn't initially look at because it was our understanding that the state was looking at this for the use of their ARPA funds, amongst many other things. And then we learned about a week ago that the, and I'll go into this in a minute, but there's a bill passing through the state legislature that received House approval, received Senate approval. There was no joint approval on the bill yet, but both House and Senate versions included premium pay. But it was for essential state workers, not to be transferred down to municipal workers. So that brought this back to our list for something that should be considered, even if it's a consideration during upcoming collective bargaining. It's something that we wanted to look at. We will be entering into collective bargaining with 10 of our unions. And maybe that's one way to handle this. But we felt that we should put it out there, you know, as everyone knows, Auburn town employees were working through the entire pandemic. A lot of communities kept their town halls closed until recently. We actually were one of the first to reopen. We had all of our employees working. We had them on split shifts, but they were all working through the pandemic. We actually opened for employees to be back here full-time the entire time in June of 2020. Whereas a lot of communities are still, even the state, still has not opened the statehouse yet of their offices. So we wanted to consider this as a category. So I just mentioned that there's really three pieces of legislation that are going to impact ARPA decisions on the local level, whether it's here in Auburn or anywhere in the country, that we believe we should make sure that we understand the impacts of this before we make a final decision on anything. Number one is the bill I just mentioned, the State ARPA Spending Bill, which also includes an allocation recommendation from the legislature for the FY21 surplus revenues. So the state did very well in FY21. There is an enormous amount of surplus revenues. And I believe this bill utilizes $1.2 billion of that in addition to the state allocation of their ARPA funds to look at the different categories. So some of it will have to be ARPA-eligible and some does not have to be ARPA-eligible because they're using surplus funds. So there were two major federal infrastructure bills that you've probably heard of, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and the Build Back Better Act. So the state funding bill that we just talked about is a total of $3.82 billion. It passed the House in October. It passed the Senate in November. And both the House and Senate bills included some major categories that they both were in agreement on. Housing, water, and sewer infrastructure, environmental infrastructure, economic development, workforce, and health and human services. There are differences between the two bills, so the House and Senate needed to get together and resolve their differences through some type of a joint committee by November 17th in order to make this current legislative session. That didn't happen, so they did draw on their formal session without a compromise on this spending bill. I don't know what the next steps are, but they won't be back in session until January. So we won't know what the final version of these bills are. And the reason that's important to us is especially on the infrastructure side. If there are funds that are going to be available to municipalities that we can apply for through the state and use the state ARPA funds or the state surplus revenue funds, then that's a category we may not want to put our own ARPA dollars into. We might want to put our ARPA dollars into a category where there is no other funding source. So that bill is going to be critically important to our final decision-making. And the recently passed, on November 15th, President Biden signed a $1.2 trillion infrastructure package to make federal investments in a wide range of public areas, public systems over the next the next five-year period. This law includes $550 billion in new spending for public transit, it includes spending for public rail, bridges, water, sewer, internet, electric vehicle infrastructure. It includes a Safe Streets Program, a competitive national infrastructure project. So the bottom line is, there's a lot of money that will be coming by way of the states and municipalities from the federal government under this Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Again, why is that so important? Because if we can fund some of our, whether it be water or sewer, infrastructure needs through the Jobs Act, then we're not going to use our limited ARPA dollars to fund something that there's another revenue source for. So this program is still being put together. It just passed, so there, the details on it aren't really specific yet, but it will be important for us to watch. And then, I'm not going to read this, but it will be on the website. There's just a whole section that I put in here on what will it do for Massachusetts? And it was a really great fact sheet that had actually been put out by the White House on, for every state, what is it going to do for your state and where do you see those dollars maybe coming? So it talks a lot about bridge repairs, infrastructure investment, and other areas in Massachusetts where those funds will be able to be used. We just don't know the specifics about accessing those funds, whether it's going to be competitive or if it's going to be formula-based. So we're waiting for more information on that. So again, this is just information on all the different things that you can do with the Infrastructure Investment Act funds. And then the second federal legislation has not passed yet. It did pass the House on November 19th, so just last week. And that's an almost $2 trillion spending package. It's actually $1.85 trillion. And again, this is one of two infrastructure bills on the federal level. This particular bill, the Build Back Better Act, will include investments, including workforce development, climate change, resilience, and affordable housing. So there are not a lot of details on this yet because it hasn't passed the Senate yet, so therefore it hasn't made it to the president for signature. I was looking at it today, and Congress is back in session today after Thanksgiving, and they are hoping to get to this bill before Christmas, but obviously there's no guarantee of that. So again, until this bill is passed, we want to make sure that whatever we're recommending under ARPA isn't covered under this bill even. So basically, the message is, as we continue to evaluate our community needs and priorities, which is why we're here this evening, and new funding sources become available, and we learn more about the regulations and what we can use the funding for, our recommendations are going to continue to evolve as well, because we don't want to make a decision too early only to find out that there was another funding source that we could have utilized. So the next steps are, public comment period will be open until December 31st. There is an email address that we established, I'll show you in a minute, where you can submit written comment directly to an email that we set up, or you can also mail it to our office at 102 Central Street. We're going to compile whatever public comment we receive, written, including the public comment that we received tonight, put it together, and present it back to the select board. And then, as we get more information on these other bills that we just talked about, we're going to make recommendations based on the public input from the community, the public input from the board, as well as new information that we get from the federal and state governments regarding their programs and where their funding dollars are going to be made available. And then at some point when all of that is done, we will go back to the board and ask for a vote on the final recommendations. So this is just the early part of this process. Again, we have, we do want to get going as soon as possible on recommendations for major infrastructure projects that require design, engineering, all the, all the preliminary work that needs to be done, because the project has to be done and the funds have to be expended by December of 2026. So it sounds like it's a long way away, but some infrastructure projects alone can take three to four years. So looking at the broader projects, we want to keep that in mind. One other thing that I want to mention, we want to keep in mind, $5 million is, again, that's an incredible amount of money, but we also don't want to have 50 different projects that are being done with $5 million for a couple of things. It dilutes the impact of some of those dollars if you spread it out too thin, but this is importantly, it creates a lot more compliance reporting and capacity issues. And we're trying to make recommendations for investment programs that's not going to require us to hire additional staff or consultants, other than obviously engineers and architects, but we're trying to be able to do whatever we can in-house without using the ARPA dollars to have to fund additional positions that would be here for three years, and then they would have to be eliminated when the ARPA funds went away. So we're trying to focus on some larger ARPA eligible projects rather than a slew of smaller projects that all need to be managed, again, remembering quarterly reports in our reports, and all the other compliance and reporting that the recipients have to give to us as well. So you can submit your written comments or suggestions until December 31st to auburnarpa@town.auburn.ma.us. And if you could, just put in the subject line, just put "ARPA," so we'll be able to see it immediately. And again, we'll go directly into this account, or you can mail it here. And again, the website that I mentioned earlier is on the, on the town's website, and if you just go into the search button, you can just type in "ARPA," and you'll come right to the page, and we have a lot of resources and links on that page. So that's it. Thank you.
Questions from board members at this time? I just have one that I want to ask, actually a couple that residents had reached out to me with. So we already answered the stormwater one. One of the questions was about food insecurity, and I know we talked about giving money to Auburn Youth and Family Services. Would the best way to address that just be in the form of grants or giving out to organizations like Auburn Youth and Family Services?
Thank you, through the chat, so good question. So for food insecurity, from what we've been learning and we're watching what other communities, some have moved ahead and started to do things, just here in Auburn, the main organization that provides food and assistance to those who are most impacted is Auburn Youth and Family Services. So rather than getting into a program where the town was responsible for providing grants to individual eligible households, because we'd have to determine which household was eligible, we believe the best route would be to provide funding directly to AYFS for food banks, which is what we did for the original $60,000 because they had an immediate need. That's something that could be baked into an ARPA budget over four years, so if we have four years to spend the dollars, we did $60,000 right now, we could put additional money in. And our recommendation would be to give it as a grant to AYFS to purchase the supplies and distribute the food and whatever costs are affiliated with that. Of course, there's a lot of reporting on their end, which is why we're in the process of doing a contract, but they would have to make sure that they're also tracking everything that they need to make sure that we get reimbursed, or there's no clawback in this. So Tom has been working with AYFS on a reporting system to try to ease it for them, because we know they're a small organization and the reporting is going to be quite onerous. So we're trying to come up with a mechanism for getting us the information we need to report and making sure that they're keeping appropriate records that can justify the use of the grant funds. So that would be our recommendation would be to run it through AYFS.
The other one before I go to public comment, I saw this a couple times, was the cost of the public safety facility. Is there any way to use this money to draw down the cost to the town on the safety facility?
There is not. And Tom Redd, you can jump in. We looked at all the categories. There was no direct correlation. The only thing we could find, and again, this, we can continue to look, but the only thing we could potentially find would be a specific facility that was dedicated toward the reduction of crime that was specifically tied to the COVID-19 pandemic. So there is no, there's no option for using the funds to build or support a public safety facility.
Thank you. Anything from board? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to public comment, just to ask that when you come up, you just say your name and address, so we have it on record. Other than that, is there anyone that has any comments or questions?
Degarty Precinct 3, I didn't hear what your question, what your last question to Julie was.
Oh, it was...
But she just, I didn't really hear it.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the last question that I asked was about the public safety facility, and if we'd be able to use any of the funds from ARPA to draw down on the cost, will ultimately be the cost of the town if that project goes forward. And the answer was no, that we really wouldn't be able to use ARPA funds for the public safety facility.
Good evening, Danny Lajus, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I do have a couple issues with, I don't know where the cap came from, the $60,000 for Auburn Youth. I'd like to see it capped a little higher, just because of what is going on in the town and how many people Auburn Youth helps. Is there a way to move that cap up higher? There are so many families that they help.
Hi, Dan, nice to see you.
Hi.
Thank you for the question. So first of all, the request that we received from AYFS was for $60,000. That was the amount of the request.
Okay.
So that was the amount that we funded. The purpose of tonight's hearing and moving forward is to determine what the priority needs are in the community. And if one of the priority needs is to continue to fund the counseling and food distribution services at AYFS, then there is no cap on that. That is something that would be discovered as we go through this process. We can certainly make recommendations, but that initial outlay of $60,000 was based on the request that their board voted on to make to the town for the $60,000.
Okay, what about the elderly up at the senior center? I know some of them can't make it out to get to a food pantry or things like that. Is there something that can be used to help them?
Yes, funds can be used for that. I do believe in Tom talking about AYFS does delivery. That was part of their request.
The reason I ask that is because I did have the pleasure to volunteer over there doing their food pantry years ago, and I couldn't believe it back then of how many families rely on AFSS. So that's, that's why I have a question. And the other is DPW, I'm sure you're going to be looking towards the payroll. I don't really see that fit for some of the employees. I know the employees worked one day a week alternating, where, so I'll say it was 20 employees, so they put two on on Monday, two on on Tuesday, two on on Wednesday, two on, and they alternated during the weeks. So I can't see to give them bonuses on working when they were getting paid for a 40-hour shift, but they were only working 16 hours. And it was the same with the school janitors. I know, you know, a couple of the school janitors that went in in the morning, worked two hours, and then they said, okay, go home and watch your videos on how to sweep and, you know, wax a floor. If they're going to distribute money towards the people who work the whole time, the fire department is by far, the ambulance crews going in to help the people with the COVID, the police department for showing up, you know, every single day. That took a strain on the town. And I know COVID went through both departments, and we got lucky that none of them got deceased from dealing with all of that. So those are just some of the ones I had in mind. The pumping station, you had brought up, the one down on Route 20 and Sword Street. The funds that were appropriated for that, can we use this for that and reappropriate the funds to different areas? What was the funds for the pumping station on Route 20? Anybody can call off the top of their head? How much money it was that Town Meeting voted on for that structure?
Yeah, Dan, that was, that was an authorization of $2.2 million.
Okay.
For that bypass, that project is currently underway. I don't know if you can do a substitution at this point, given a number of things. Number one, Town Meeting already authorized that, and a contract has been awarded as a result of that funding. So I don't know if ARPA would allow for a redirection of those funds, but that's something we can take a look at.
And I think in the same vein as that, we'd have other things coming down the line in CIP that would have the same effect, right, of if we use it.
I'm just trying to think of ways to save the taxpayers' money, because, again, I spoke to Mr. Kevin Olrich the other day, and we can't afford to keep upping the taxes to the point, we're going to end up seeing tent cities out here like are in Boston from the elderly and stuff, we can't afford to live in this town. You know, it's, it's getting ridiculous. And I know, we say, oh, you know, we could have went to two and a half. Well, I'd rather see it go to 9.9 instead of even hitting one. And there's a bunch of people, I think, that are going to vote no on the budget if there's anything over that. And I hope this can be used to do some of this. You know, let's save some of these poor people.
Thank you. So I know, I can, we can answer a couple things for you, some of this, we're just trying to listen.
No, no, I understand. Thank you.
I would just, I would say, as I said, we would have to look to see if you can go back on projects that were previously approved prior to this legislation passing. Generally, there's no retro, retroactivity on things like that, but to your point, that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're looking at the CIP and looking at projects that we know we're going to have to pay for down the road, including HVAC upgrades, sewer upgrades, and trying to take it off of the CIP so we don't have to charge the taxpayer for it, because ultimately, they're going to have to pay for these upgrades because they're needed. So even if we've already got ones underway, we're looking to what ones are coming up and the ones that we're going to have to, to work on. The DPW, I appreciate it, I just want for clarification, during the first, I think, six weeks of the pandemic, as, as the governor had issued orders on social distancing and closing offices other than essential offices, we had, actually, all of our employees were working. We did have to split shifts, so we, especially at DPW, we had to split shifts because they were sharing vehicles. And if you recall, at that point, we didn't even have a lot of the data that we had on, on health-related issues. But I can tell you, as of June 20th, which was two months after the pandemic, we were 100% back in our offices. And the reason we were back in our offices at 100%, even if we had split hours, people were coming in six to, six to four or eight to six, we, we were all 100% working here. The building was closed to the public other than by appointment only, but every department was here. There were departments that could never work remotely because we had certain systems that they couldn't access from their homes. So every, I just want to assure everybody, everybody was working, we did a lot to split their shifts. The first couple months, as it was everywhere, was a little bit of a challenge, but we had to have everybody back here very early on, so every single person here was working. So that's, that you raise a great point, the issue of how do you determine premium pay for what, for who, how is that going to happen? So we're carefully watching the state legislation and how they're going to do it for premium pay for state workers. There are committees, there's formulas, there's, it's a complicated process, so...
I think it should be a physical, working 40 hours, not receiving a paycheck for 40 and only showing up for 16 or 20. Physically working the 40 hours. Because like I said, I know some of the employees who showed up for work and they were like, okay, you know, do this, 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 and then go home and watch a video. You know, go home and watch a video on how to wax a floor, go home and watch a video on, you know, how to do this, go home. And I was like, are you kidding me?
Well, you raise, you raise a good point in that DPW really can't, there's very little you can do from your home for DPW, other departments you can work for.
Correct.
So that's, that's something we certainly want to look at. But I also want to, if Tom could just jump in, just to make sure we get the information. So food distribution...
Is, yes, disparately affected, so to Mr. Lajus's point, seniors were disproportionately affected, so that would be an eligible expense under the current regulations.
So is part of that being allocated for them?
So there is food distribution as part of the food bank. Now, if I can just answer or elaborate on what the manager said, there is a contract, as she's, you know, the manager spoke, we are getting into a contract with AYFS, and a contract can be amended to increase the scope and the dollar value. So it's not set, you know...
It's not set in stone, okay, perfect.
But once again, in terms of the compliance, you know, one of the prerequisites that we started off originally is the... that we started off originally is the i's were gonna be dotted and the t's were gonna be crossed because now we're dealing with treasury and the regulations on treasury, you know, with treasury in terms of APO. So it will be contractually obligated, as you probably well know, that a contract can be amended both in terms of dollars and time. So that is something that could, you know, can occur in the, in the future.
Good, good. Thank you. I just hate to see somebody in this town go without, when we have the means to help them.
And just saying, nothing is set in stone at all. That's why we're here tonight and, and over the next month to get input. We were just throwing out general categories, which again, you know, public health, um, infrastructure, AYFS, those are the general categories that we see as the biggest needs in this community. And the seniors are absolutely served, serviced by AYFS, uh, but other options could be looked at.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has questions or comments that wants to come up?
Robert Tatro, Forwardwood Drive. Thank you for having this meeting, first of all. Before I get started, uh, I kinda think that government is, is best at serving the people when you do things like you're doing, where you're bringing this to the community and looking for input, and we're working kinda together as a partnership. So I appreciate you taking time out of your, away from your families and your other obligations to schedule this different meeting than it was usual. Uh, and so thank you very much for taking your time out and presenting this to the community. So I'm gonna kinda take you around a little bit of a ride, I guess. Um, I'm not gonna try to, but I have a somewhat of a different idea for a proposal that I think might be helpful to all. And I'm gonna read the paragraph that I actually looked at to help me kinda get this idea in my head here. Hang on one second. So I was looking at the, um, the requirements today, and it said that recipients may use funds for maintenance of infrastructure or pay-go spending for building of new infrastructure under general services. But it is capped at the amount of revenue lost due to the public health emergency. For more information, acceptable infrastructure projects received should be referred to eligible uses as outlined in the IRF and the compliance and reporting guidance. So with that being said, um, I sort of have an idea that might be helpful to the community as a whole. So rather than spending money on, um, as you had mentioned, um, Tom Manager, sort of kind of plugging all the little holes here and not really focusing on anything as one project or maybe two or three other larger projects, um, I, I see the, the difficulty in doing that as well. We're always gonna have infrastructure issues that we're dealing with. So with that being said, I'm gonna try to propose something that would help the community as a whole. And if you can bear with me for a minute and sort of have an open mind, and I'll try to answer questions, um, if you have any. But so across from, as you know, um, we lost revenue at the golf course, um, due to the COVID outbreak. We lost revenue from the parks, Pappas Field, the other sports places in town because we weren't able to participate in sports. We didn't have those people coming in from out of town with the rental fees. Clearly, we didn't have people using the golf course on a regular basis. So I think that justifies my idea a little bit also is because we can demonstrate the loss of revenue. So if you're familiar with the Packerjog Golf Course, and they have the parking lot across the street, and we have that field behind it where the barn is that's used for storage of the golf carts and, and different types of equipment, et cetera. So this is a project that I've had in my head for a few years now, and I'm thinking maybe this might be the opportunity time, the opportune time, excuse me, to present it. So I've always kinda pictured having, I guess if you would, not a field house, but more of like a reception area with a community kitchen, a, a large room attached to it that would have the ability to do a multipurpose function. Um, it would be a nice addition for the community, first of all, for people to be able to go up there, have a round of golf, go across the street, have something off of a pub menu, enjoy a local craft brew or a glass of wine, sit on a deck with umbrellas, if you get the idea of where I'm going. But also where we could develop it so it would be an emergency management shelter or facility if it was necessary. So if we had a mass power outage or a mass casualty incident, or we just needed to be able to hold a meeting, when you know, we've had meetings here where we have two or three meetings going on, and we don't have the room or the capacity to handle it. That also could be something that we could use for, as I mentioned, the emergency management team. They could go up there during storms, um, during mass power outages and be able to utilize it as an emergency shelter. Um, I know that I've also seen on the local, um, social media where they announced during the summer that it's really hot, so we're gonna open up a cooling center. And it's generally speaking, gonna be at the senior center. Uh, and it's not necessarily the perfect environment for that. It does work because the people are right there, but it's not always conducive because other people live in different sections of the town. Conversely, in the winter, we have ice storms. You know, I can think, when I bought my generator, we had the ice storm in October many years ago that we were out of power for three days. That could serve as a community kitchen, where we could actually create hot meals. We could shuttle those to the senior center. So that would be the, the, kind of the purpose of enjoying it at the golf course on a regular basis, um, allowing the people, the patrons that do that, which would recoup some of that lost income, make it a multi-function so we can use it off-hours, emergency management, et cetera. But then at the same time, that would also serve, that kitchen that I have in mind, would also be able to service the Pappas Fields, um, the one that's behind the skating rink, the one that's on the other side. So you could actually increase the level of quality food that you're providing to the patrons of all of those, um, items, right? So the three different fields that we use during the course of the summers, uh, you could actually make food there, bring it over in a truck, present it quicker. I've been standing in line at many of the events in town, and I've looked, as somebody who has food service experience, and thought they can serve a lot more people much quicker if they had a different level of organization. So if you can see, the reason why I say I would like to see a project like this in town is because the community as a whole could benefit from it. People that live in the neighborhood could walk up there on a summer night if they don't wanna cook, sit on the deck, enjoy themselves. We have a place to put all of our, uh, the equipment for the winter in the barn if it was renovated. And then again, it just, I think if you had corporate events at the golf course where they're gonna have a, a nine-hole tournament, and they're gonna go do an award ceremony after, that would also work. Uh, we have all of these great sports leagues in town, and they really don't have a place that they could actually go and have maybe an award ceremony at the end or a fundraiser. So I really see this as like a multifunctional facility that would serve the town and the community in many different ways if it was designed and implemented properly. So again, you know, we can, we can always throw things at the wall and see if they stick. And I know that's kind of a far stretch, but I think it actually would work if we would kinda put our heads together and make it seem like it would be a functional idea. Um, and then again, it would only be a small portion of the overall five and some odd million dollars because the town already has the land. Building the building wouldn't be that, well, of course, it would be cost-effective, but you know, we're looking at, let's say, a half a million dollars for a state-of-the-art facility, where you would benefit for the next 50 years over that facility by bringing additional income in, being able to support the other parks, have it as a emergency management facility and a multifunction room. So whether or not that would work, I think it might not be a bad idea, at least to consider. Um, projects like that would improve our community overall. Um, rather than just see, having, you know, infrastructure down the road, we fix that, nobody can see it, nobody can appreciate it, they don't know where that money goes. I recognize that we have to do those things. As a member of the zoning board, I deal with those issues all the time. And, you know, for us, one of the things we have to concern ourselves, our primary responsibility is the aquifer protection zones. So I'm familiar with all that, and a lot of that comes from the private businesses who wanna build over our wells or the budding properties. So, um, with that being said, you know, we have other projects coming up in town that we're talking about, you know, the possibility of a public safety complex. You know, we built those things before. You know, we built new police stations, we renovated fire stations. They're all in pretty good shape right now. I know we need to take it, uh, and address those things in the not-too-distant future, but I think a project like what I'm proposing would benefit the community as a whole and sort of lift the town up a little bit as well. Um, so that's the only thing I have. Um, I just thought it was kind of an interesting idea, a concept to maybe be able to use some of those funds to, uh, benefit everyone, including those people that are would be considered at West Community Members. So with that being said, I appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has?
Good evening, Doreen Goodrich, also a town meeting member lower at Windbrook Drive. So, um, my questions are more just process, procedure, and timeline. So, um, I'll just ask my questions and then if you can answer them or think about them. Uh, my first question is, will there be someone designated, um, to comply? You know, there, there will be a lot of compliance issues, um, paperwork. If we, if we don't do things right, I would hate to see us have to give that money back. And I've seen it in government, you know, whether it's grant money or whatever, it's very important that you follow the, um, the requirements. So my first question would be, would there be an individual, even if it were a part-time, non-benefited person who would, um, deal with just the compliance through this? My second question is, um, the town manager has said several times that she'll make a recommendation to the, you know, town administration will make a recommendation to the board. Is this going to be, um, are these decisions going to be made by votes of the Board of Selectmen of how this money is being spent? Or per the charter, is it the town manager who will make these decisions with, shall we say, supportive of a vote through the, um, Board of Selectmen? And if it is the Board of Selectmen, what is, and they may not have had these discussions yet, what is your thoughts on moving forward once you have public input? Will you then put this on your agenda again? Will it be just left as a tabled item? Will the public be alerted as to when you're going to be taking action on this? And, um, well, you know, I, I know the board does a lot of subcommittees. I'm just, I'm just very concerned with the process, procedure, timeline. I know we have until 2023, did you just say, to spend this money? But, um, but we also wanna move forward with using it. And I know town administration has made some great recommendations. So again, I plan on following this process, very fascinated by it, very interested in it. It's a great opportunity to, um, to use some, uh, creative thoughts in spending this money, but also ensure that we're in compliance. So, um, please keep the public apprised of the timeline, who will be taking action, and when votes will be taken on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wanna take question one, or do you wanna pass it off to?
I, I can do, uh, through the chair. I would say that as far as compliance, the, the person who's been charging it right now is, uh, town accountant, uh, Tom Zedelis. So he ultimately, given his role as town accountant, is gonna be responsible for this, uh, working with the CFO and assistant town manager, Ed Kuzinovich. I would also add to that, however, that depending on how many projects or initiatives we decide to fund through APO funds, there may be a need for additional assistance. So we have to keep that in mind. If we've got four projects that need to be worked on, that's a lot different than having 50 projects that need to be worked on. So we have to make sure we have the capacity to manage this and follow the compliance, as you said. So it is the town accountant, but the town accountant may need help. Uh, so we won't be able to say how that's gonna happen until we know how many, uh, projects. As far as, um, I believe that the recommendation, I'm just trying to make sure, the compliance, the recommendation that we had made to the board is that the Board of Selectmen, uh, actually vote on the final, you know, we could make recommendations to them. Uh, the board itself actually wanted to have this public hearing to get the input from the public, so, you know, we thank them for doing that. Uh, our intent was to come back under next steps, to come back to, uh, the board with our compilation of all the input that we received. And hopefully, you know, like Mr. Tatro said, looking at some of the unique creative ideas that come, come out of this, to see if it's even possible to do some of those things. And then come back with a recommendation to the board. It was our, our, uh, thought that the board may be taking the final vote on the funding. I would, I returned to the board, that was on our, just as far as timing, Doreen, as far as what the timing is, because of those other federal and state legislation that we're hoping, you know, the, the state legislature can't even act until they're back in session, as you know, in January. So we're hoping, you know, we've been pushing as soon as possible to get the legislature to act on that because we don't wanna make funding decisions only to find out that the state made funding decisions that change our recommendations. So we don't, we're, town administration wouldn't make a final recommendation until we see what's gonna be available to us from the state and from this second infrastructure bill, as well as the first infrastructure bill. So that all depends on how quickly it moves through Congress, how quickly it moves through the state legislature. But we would withhold our final recommendations until we have that information, hopefully by February.
Uh, yes, sir. I just wanted to add, so, uh, it was actually Dan's idea to have the, this meeting to actually get public input. And we briefly talked about having another meeting, depending on how well-attended this one was. Uh, so I'm not sure what the board will decide ultimately going forward after this, uh, depending on the public input that we get. Maybe we'll decide to have another meeting, uh, looking for more public input. And of course, as you know, the board can attend our meetings and, and talk on it there. So I don't, I don't know if we'll even vote to close the hearing tonight, but I guess we'll decide that at the end, uh, if we wanna continue to another meeting. So it's still up in the air. I don't know if other board members wanna talk to that, Dan, since this is, like, you brought this before us and encouraged us to get public input. I don't know if you have anything to add.
I'm certainly not a big believer in, it was my idea. It's board agreed, and it's a board process. So, um, for me, obviously, this is as when you were on board, Doreen, this is a joint effort. I am perfectly prepared to have further discussions, both at a meeting and privately with staff to see what's going on. But frankly, I came here tonight just to hear from the public as to what their priorities were. Because ultimately, it's your money. It's not our money. It's your money, and you should be engaged and aware of what the requirements are. And I think the manager and the staff gave us a good old view of the challenges as well as the opportunities that this, or these pieces of legislation present to us. So I personally am, you know, interested to see what's going to come of all of these other moving pieces before I'm prepared to do anything further, frankly. But I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
Are there any other comments or questions from anyone else?
Just going back to the, um, premium pay discussion and then bringing it back to the beginning of the discussion, you said that there was, um, possibly some funds available for, like, small businesses and things like that. Would that be in the form of grants? And, um, you know, 'cause I'm, I'm a firm believer in equity. So if, if municipal employees are getting, um, premium pay, then private employees should have the same opportunities for premium pay. So, so, so would it be in the form of, of grants that, that businesses could apply for some of this money for premium pay? I'm just, I'm just not getting that aspect.
So through the chair, the premium pay is, falls under two categories, public premium pay and private premium pay. The concern that we had about the private premium pay is a capacity issue. So we're, how would that, you would have to have a, a whole system set up for how to do that. Would it be grant, if premium pay is not a grant, premium pay is a wage, and it is taxable. So the treasury last week came out with a ruling that anything made under premium pay is considered a wage and is to be taxable. So it's technically not a grant, it's a taxable wage. And there would have to be systems and processes in place to make a determination as to which businesses are eligible, which employees in those businesses are eligible, and who would manage that program. We don't have the capacity in-house to do that. Uh, that is something that I had actually been advocating for on the state level, for the state to use their funds to do a regional business assistance program, where maybe we submit some of our funds to a regional program. But then they hire staff, they have the capacity, they have, uh, lenders, they have underwriters, they have everything within this organization to manage that money, to be able to make sure it's going to the qualified private sector employees. Um, again, we don't have the capacity to do that in-house, so that was not one of our recommendations, 'cause we, right now, would have to actually go out and set up a whole new system, do some hiring, and create a whole new division just to handle the premium pay for businesses or even for business assistance under another category, not premium pay. You can also give assistance to businesses through grants and loans. Again, we don't have the capacity to do that. We don't have someone in-house that does lending. Uh, we don't have underwriting, uh, employees. So this would have to go, we'd have to outsource that. So whether it's to a consultant or hiring a whole new department of people to handle managing the funds. So we did not recommend that. Again, because of the capacity issue, we were hoping that the state would do it on a, on a regional basis, where each region in the state would get funding from the state, or even if we put in some of our funding, they would then be able to manage that kind of a program. they would then be able to manage that kind of a program for the business community. So, Ed or Tom, did you want to add?
I think you covered it.
So I'll just, I'll just say one last thing about the premium pay because I believe that premium pay is probably going to be one of the most controversial issues that you're going to deal with, with these fundings. As Mr. Largess said, you know, you have police and fire who were out there on the front line dealing with COVID patients. You had the board of health who was dealing with COVID patients. But then as town meeting members and just residents, you know, we hear from people who say, I would have loved to just gone to work because the unemployment that I got didn't pay for my health insurance premiums. And, and so it's, it's a real catch-22 and I wish you guys good luck in your decisions and your, and your discussions on the premium pay because I think that's going to be one of the, the most controversial issues you'll deal with, but I trust this board to make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I do want to ask, we have some people participating online, if there's anyone virtually who wants to say anything, you can just unmute yourselves or make a gesture. Someone unmute themselves? Was there anyone participating virtually that just? Are you turning it back? Is there any other public comment from anyone in the room? Want to add any suggestions or talk about priorities that were mentioned here? Seeing none, go back to the board. Are there any comments or questions?
I guess, next steps are an issue. And so through you, Mr. Jim, and to the town manager, I know we're holding open the public comment period till the 31st of next month. When do you think you would have, you know, a chance to compile that and bring back to the board too?
Through the chair, it really does depend on how much public input we receive and how difficult, you know, if it's, if it's not an overwhelming amount, you know, we can get that right back to you in January. I think as far as when we would get our revised recommendations to the board, again, I'd like to wait and see what the state legislation is going to provide for. If there's any opportunity either through the federal infrastructure bill or the state legislation to pay for some of the infrastructure, that could potentially either remove it from our list. Or some of the line items in the state senate bill, as well as the house bill, require a match. So even if for some reason we were eligible for some of our infrastructure needs to get paid for, you might have to use some of your ARPA dollars to provide that match. So we kind of need to see the final version of it. So I would be hesitant to tell you when we're going to make our recommendations because we'd like to see the final legislation passed into law before we do that. But certainly as far as putting together the information that we receive from the public, you know, as soon as, as soon as we can gather it all together and get it to you and report, we're happy to do that.
I didn't expect recommendations because I'm sure once January starts, they'll be starting the budget process at the state level. So I'm sure that will cause a delay as well. I was just wondering when we could put it on for reasonably and see what next steps, maybe get a status update to Mrs. Goodrich's point, you know, just to keep the public engaged and informed.
I don't see why we couldn't. So the first meeting is January 10th. I would say we wouldn't be able to get it to you for the first meeting. Because that really would be holiday, one, one day of the holiday, but that really, in the day that we have to then give it to you four days in advance for the posting, that would really only give us three days. I don't see what we could get that done. So possibly later in January.
So I was just checking to see if there were any other comments from people that I had gotten from the public. So one other one that actually we talked about in the presentation, so water quality. Now, I know you mentioned that and everyone in the room knows that we have the private water districts or independent water districts that run separately from the town. If we were to go down that route, do you know what the process might look like for getting funds? Would we have to have a survey, not a survey, but a, a study done and they'd have a study done as to how to improve the water quality and then would that be paid out in the form of grants?
So we would have to have several meetings with the water, both water districts to have that conversation. I don't know what they have in place. I know there are, the federal infrastructure bill that did just pass has money for water quality upgrades that have to be in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And my understanding is that that will include some grant funding as well as funding for planning and analysis tools. So if the water districts don't have a plan already in place, I believe an eligible expenditure, at least under the infrastructure bill, would be for developing that plan. Under the ARPA bill, we'd have to double-check and see would, is it eligible to do a plan for clean water or it doesn't actually have to be an implementation of a project? I don't, I don't have that answer right now unless, Tom, do I think that's something we would have to look at. But a lot of them do divide between planning, analysis, and then implementation. So we would have to find out. I think the first thing before we even went down that route is we'd have to find out if the public and then this board wants us to pursue something along, to want to do some kind of water quality initiatives. And if so, then I think we have to start the conversation with the water districts. We have not done that yet.
Before we close the hearing, I'll just ask one last time if there's anyone either participating in here or virtually, if they have a comment or a question that they want to make last minute.
So there's two right now. So there's two pieces of legislation that we're following. One is the state legislation, which is the state utilization of ARPA as well as their FY21 surplus funding. That total bill, I think is 3.84 billion. That passed the House, passed the Senate, but no resolution was made as to the differences between the two bills before the session ended. They don't go back into session until January. So at a minimum, they're not even going to be taking the issue up again until January. On the congressional side, Congress is back into session today. They, somebody in Congress released a statement to the media that said, and I don't want to quote the wrong person, but somebody said that their intent was to try to get the Build Back Better Act addressed before Christmas, that they were anxious to get that moving before Christmas. Again, that doesn't mean that will actually happen, but it did pass the House. It is a bipartisan bill, so it does have more support than other legislation on the federal level that might be partisan. So it's a bipartisan infrastructure bill, one of two. So there's a chance it could get taken up before Christmas. Whether it gets passed by Congress before Christmas, I'm not sure, Dan. So our, our way of thinking is, you know, hopefully that would get passed in, even if it was in January. In January, we'd have a better idea of what that was. Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair to say.
I think we, yeah, we'll come back to the board and see. I wouldn't mind holding another meeting, another public hearing to try to get more public input or at least take in what people have. And at that point, we have things in writing too, so if that fits the timeline for that. I don't know what other board members' thoughts are. I don't want to speak for other board members on just one vote, so.
We don't know. That's, that's part of the dilemma here. I don't know, Dan, if these funds will be allocated based on formula, if by line item, you know, there's, let's say there's 100 line items or there's, there's actually many more than that, but by line item, will there be a competitive process where municipalities will compete for the funding or will it just be allocated to the municipality? So until we have a better idea of that, we don't know what the dollar value will be. The same thing with the Federal Infrastructure Investment Act, JOB Act. We, right now, don't know what dollars will come. The state knows what dollars are coming to the state, but how those dollars are going to be distributed from the state is still under discussion. Again, even if you take this act here, so this, so the ARPA Act was passed in March of 2021, and here we are heading into December and the regulations on, are not final. So even if these, what these pieces of legislation pass, to put a $2 trillion infrastructure bill into action, the, the US Treasury is going to have a lot of work to lay out the procedure. How do you get that money? Who's eligible? How do you apply for it? So that may take some time. I think there are some recommendations that the town could still make on the use of ARPA that are more clean-cut. I think just some of them, we really want to wait and see if there's another funding source before we commit our, our limited dollars.
If there's nothing else, the motion goes here.
I would actually make a motion that we continue the hearing to the January 24th and we can take the temperature of what's going on at that time and then potentially, obviously, people can come and share their thoughts at any given time. But I would say, you know, do a status update on the 24th of January and if for some reason we can't meet that deadline, then we can address it at the first meeting in January and let the public know.
So the motion to continue the hearing until January 24th, January 24th of 2022, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abosed, unanimous? If there's nothing else, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Jim.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.